Good evening, Garden City. I would like to call to order our regularly scheduled city council meeting for Monday, September 12th, 2022 at 7:00 p.m. Our first order of business is our opening ceremonies, which consist of the National Anthem, the Pledge of Allegiance, and a moment of silence for those service members who have given their lives for our country. Would everybody please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Mr. Miller, would you take the role, please?
Yes, Mayor Walker. Let's show him to be excused.
Yep.
All right, Mayor Pro Tem Squires.
Here.
Councilmember DeMichael.
Here.
Councilmember Earl.
Here.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Here.
Councilmember Lynch.
Here.
Councilmember Carefodus.
I'm here.
You do have a quorum with six members present.
Thank you. Okay, we'll now move on to item four, the approval of the agenda. I will need a motion to accept the agenda.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Councilmember Lynch?
I move for the approval of the agenda for Monday, September 12th, 2022, at 7:00 p.m. as presented.
Support.
Okay, support from Councilmember Earl. Any comments from the table? From the general public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Item five is recognition. Tonight, we have a resolution recognizing World Polio Day requested by the Garden City Rotary Club. Mr. Miller, would you please read the resolution into the record?
Yes, this is a resolution of the City of Garden City recognizing World Polio Day. Whereas Rotary International and the Rotary Clubs of District 6400 inclusive of Garden City, Michigan have been engaged in a 37-year campaign to eradicate polio worldwide. And whereas Rotary brings 117 years of history to this initiative, its members are business, professional, and community leaders who provide humanitarian service, encourage high ethical standards, and help build goodwill and peace in the world. Forty-six thousand Rotary Clubs located in more than 200 countries and geographical areas build coalitions and initiate service projects to address today's challenges, including illiteracy, disease, hunger, poverty, lack of clean water, and environmental concerns. And whereas when Rotary began its mission to eradicate polio, more than 350,000 children in 125 countries were stricken with polio every year, and nearly 1,000 people were affected by the crippling disease every day. Since then, polio cases have been reduced by 99.9% worldwide. And whereas today only two countries, Afghanistan and Pakistan, remain polio endemic, due to the efforts of Rotary and its partners, the world is on the threshold of ending polio forever, making it only the second disease after smallpox to be eradicated. And whereas public awareness, advocacy, and funding remain crucial to Rotary and its partners, the World Health Organization, the U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, and UNICEF. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Garden City, Michigan, recognizes Monday, October 24th, 2022, to be World Polio Day in the City of Garden City.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
And we do have two members of the Garden City Rotary Club here, James Lenz, Kathy Braubender, and we do have the resolution for them, for you to present to them. So if you'd like to come up and do that.
Okay, are there any officials from the county or the state that would like to make a comment? I don't see any. Okay. All right, moving on to item number seven, presentations. For an update on the Radcliffe Center, Mr. Doherty.
All right, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. To start off tonight's presentation, I'd like to begin by mentioning the Maplewood Center because of its relation to the Radcliffe Center. These slides will be up on the screens. Nearly three years ago, at the end of 2019, we started to plan for the renovation of the Maplewood Center. The facility is very antiquated and has limited space, so the long-term benefits of the facility were very constrained. At that time, the decision was made to consider expanding the Maplewood Center with one control-access point as well as a gymnasium. As you can see on the screen, the new entrance and parking was designed to be on the western side of the building, in addition to a full-size athletic gymnasium to be built, allowing an entrance to the gymnasium from different hallways. The interior of the building was also going to receive a facelift to make the facility more inviting. The project was so far along that it was the original project, the Garden City, which requested funding from Wayne County for the two new additions. But then, the Radcliffe Center became available to the city to purchase, and we moved away from the reconstruction of Maplewood Center and focused our attention on the Radcliffe Center. It should be stated that the old building of Maplewood is no cost to the city to operate in the future. The diagram on the screen indicates the green section as GSRP, the beige section as the library, and the purple as the thrift shop. The rest of the building, not colored in, is still available for another educational program in the future. The revenue brought in from the rent of GSRP in a library is now $128,000 a year. With the annual cost for utilities insurance of just over $70,000, the city will start to have an annual profit of up to $58,000 a year to assist with miscellaneous repairs as they come about, such as AC or boiler issues in the future. And we still have one-third of the building to rent. In short, Maplewood Center is becoming a profit center for the city. As history would dictate, Schoolcraft College originally approached the city to ask us if we would assist the college in demolishing the Radcliffe Center so that 60 new homes could be built on the site. Not knowing the city was currently considering a major investment in the Maplewood Center, the college thought the 60 new homes would be attractive to the city for tax revenue. Upon hearing that the 14 acres in the building were to be sold off to a developer for $175,000, the city jumped at the chance to purchase the building as the city's new community center. Through a quick decision by the mayor and city council, the city purchased the 14 acres and 78,000-square-foot building for 175 grand. Since the building was used as a college just four months ago, the Radcliffe Center is in very good condition for a school, but needed some reconstruction to be a community center. In the satellite view of the property on the screen, it's very clear how much of the acreage is now owned by the city. The property borders North Wildwood to the west and Radcliffe to the east. The complex includes tremendous parking, as well as about one-third of the grass area to the south between the building and the school district's administration building. What was just added to the screen is the construction of a new entrance and an athletic gymnasium. Similar to the Maplewood Center, the same two amenities could be used at the Radcliffe Center. Currently, the western entrance opens up into a hallway, leaving essentially no space for a proper lobby. The addition of a 1,600-square-foot lobby would control access and make the lobby a more attractive entrance. As far as, as for the larger square, that would be about a 7,000-square-foot athletic gymnasium for youth and adult sports alike. Youth teams such as volleyball, basketball, or such could take place, while open gym would also allow for individual play or pickup games. The large red box is what is used, used to be used as a small gymnasium for the former junior high school, but was changed to a theater by Schoolcraft. The theater will be discussed later in the presentation. As you'll see in the following presentation, the facility is truly being designed as a place for residents and guests of all ages, seniors in the morning, teens during the day, and adults during the evening. While some different age programs will overlap, the majority of programs and activities will be split into those three categories and time periods. During the mornings, while most teens are in school and adults are working, the new facility will be open for active and passive seniors to take computer classes, compete in the game room filled with billiards and large games, take part in competitive card games, or find some time to exercise in the senior fitness room. After a class or just taking a walk through the hallways as a form of exercise, seniors can then stop by the gift shop and cafe to purchase a coffee or pastry, just to hang out with new and old friends in one of the several sitting areas that would be established and also discussed tonight. Then in the afternoon, the facility would change its focus to engage the school-aged youth of the community to be a safe place away from roaming the streets. With Garden City Middle School next door, the new facility and programming will be able to serve the perfect age. There will be study areas as well as special activities for computer programming. In the evening, the facility will transition again to more adult-oriented programming. While an activity such as youth dance classes will take place in the afternoon and the evening, computer classes, the game room, arts classes, et cetera, will be offered to adult residents. While many parents are waiting for the youngsters in the dance program, the parents can now participate in their own active or passive activity. As with the morning crowd, the evening visitors will also find a gift store and cafe open to obtain a coffee, a snack, or some Garden City apparel. While we thought we had until July to take over the facility, Schoolcraft College was ready to hand over the building when their last class ended in May. Due to Schoolcraft's earlier departure, city staff was left to fast-track some projects that we expected to have more time to develop. An immediate issue that became apparent was the need to replace the internet servers so that the current tenants could continue to have internet access and continue their work without disruption. An immediate patch was employed, but the facility is still short of Wi-Fi throughout the building. Schoolcraft removed all access point modems, leaving the city with the infrastructure but not the hardware. So item number 11B7 tonight is the staff's request for the installation of all access points for universal Wi-Fi throughout the building. Also, as indicated in the presentation, the work at the new Radcliffe Center has been done exceptionally, has been exceptionally varied, from the general cleanup and removal of debris to the moving of the food pantry to the construction of the new dance room walls. The city's been very instrumental in reducing the cost of the redevelopment of the facility. So now I'd like to give you an overview of not only what's been done so far, but what's expected in the next coming months. One of the first projects in which we focused on was the move of the food pantry into Radcliffe Center. Initially, the rooms were emptied of chairs and tables, and then the coolers, shelving, and food items were transported from the Maplewood Center to the Radcliffe Center with the help of some community volunteers. As indicated on the screen, the new food pantry is much more spacious than in their old location. In addition, across from the hall, across the hall from the new food pantry is an additional room for the storage and a gather of commodities, as well as a small office space for Pat, the director of the food pantry, to keep her appropriate records and meet with individuals and families looking for help. This past year, the food pantry served an average of 100 families a month, including some needing emergency food. On average, the food pantry puts out roughly 2,100 pounds of food each month to the most vulnerable among us. During early discussions of what the Radcliffe Center could be, we quickly moved to meet with our long-term dance director and instructor Lori to discuss what was needed to make the dance program even more outstanding. By next June, Lori will have been the dance program director for 40 years. The current dance program includes over 500 participants per week, attending up to 50 classes offered per week. The issue with the old school building was that since none of the rooms in the Radcliffe Center were large enough to host dance classes, changes needed to be made to turn four rooms into two. Due to the need to complete the dance rooms as soon as possible, the Public Works Department took on the task of personally reconstructing the rooms. As indicated in the picture on the right, all former computers, tables, and chairs had to be removed, leading to the removal of a cinder block wall by sledgehammer. The next step was to remove the drop ceilings and grid to raise the ceiling height for more headroom during dance classes. Once the ceiling tiles were removed, there were obvious openings between adjoining rooms and the hallway. Through advisement of the building official and the city fire marshal, staff was directed to fully secure the openings, as indicated on screen three, a screen, on the screen. Three sides of each room needed additional work to make sure the rooms were fire-safe. Another issue for the dance room was in order to hang the mirrors along the walls, the walls needed to be leveled off. To do so, the staggered walls were made even from end to end. As indicated on the screen, the walls had to be studded, and sheets of wood were installed from floor to ceiling to even off the walls in preparation of hanging the mirrors. As indicated in the picture on the bottom right, the next step was the painting of the ceilings black and the walls of steel gray. New LED lights were then hung from the ceiling. LED lights will reduce long-term costs by 50% with a payback period of three years. As shown on the screen, the hardwood floors look outstanding. For such a historic program in our city and one in which thousands of Garden City families have taken part in, and thousands more will in the future, having an exceptional floor is a wonderful attribute of the program and the community. From what the city staff walked into in the picture on the left side of the screen to what the dance program will have from now on is tremendous. The progression of the work in the picture is stark and shows the amount of time that was put into this one-time project. The work completed over the last month will benefit the city for decades. And keep in mind, there are two rooms that look identical to the room that's on the right. Two nice additions to the dance program are a professional dance store and an office space, as well as a parents' waiting room. What was formerly the Schoolcraft College bookstore is now the dance store, connected to the store as an office space for the dance program director to manage the extensive program. The picture on the right indicates an empty room that in the future will have chairs and tables and things for parents of the dance students. The room's expected to be outfitted with furniture and televisions with a closed-circuit video system so that the dance rooms can be seen on the televisions. As for the new computer lab, the picture on the left is the room as it is today, while the picture on the right shows what it could look like. The new computer lab will be a well-appointed room and enable the city to offer an array of computer program classes. From learning how to use PowerPoint and create Excel spreadsheets to how to Skype with family members, there'll be a good share of diverse computer classes available. The purchase of the new computers is being requested tonight as item 11B6, with funding for the room coming from a Wayne County grant. The future game room started out as two small classrooms with a cinder block wall between the two. The wall was removed along with the ceiling tile, which was uneven between the two rooms and had warped tiles. The request to install a new ceiling, as well as the new LED lighting, is being requested tonight as item 11B4, with funding coming from a Wayne County grant. As indicated on the screen, the upcoming game room will house a variety of large games such as billiards, ping pong, foosball, table shuffleboard, bumper pool, et cetera. There will also be televisions broadcasting sporting events, as well as seating areas. This is a room like several others that we're creating, in which small groups of friends will meet regularly to get together, thereby creating a new tradition. The new game tables will also be bid out soon and brought back to the council for consideration. What's expected to be the most attractive program to the city's youth between the ages of nine and 15 is the teen tech room. It's not lost on the staff that the community center is located adjacent to the city's middle school, with students in that age range of the teen tech program. In addition, Farmington Elementary School, which houses youth in the age of nine to 11, is about a half a mile walk from the new center. One of the most vulnerable age groups is exactly the target of this type of programming. While many of the city's youth has someone at home waiting for their arrival after school, others often just hang out looking for something to do. The teen tech program will keep kids in a safe space with a variety of computer games and programs to play, as well as a movie area. The long-term plan for the teen tech room is to develop a competitive esports program so that the Garden City youth can virtually compete with teams from across the country. Imagine our city's youth being able to use the computer game skills they have to compete in a room such as what you see on the screen. One of the few rooms that was already ready to go was the cardio room. So the cardio room is currently ready to house all types of fitness programs, as you see. On the screen now is a picture of the room that has yet to be received, receive a makeover. The senior fitness room will feature each of the machines indicated on the screen. The heavy commercial-grade fitness equipment, which is tonight's item 11B5, will last for many years, as well as reduce the city's liability of unstable donated equipment. As for the room, new ceiling tiles with LED lighting will be installed, as well as a rubber floor and decorative metal plate on the wall as seen behind the picture. The fitness equipment will not only be available, will only be available to our registered seniors, and it's not meant to be a replacement for a professional gym membership. The few pieces of equipment should complement our local fitness centers, not replace them. A card room is a staple for community centers, which at this point is a great way for friends to get together, play in cards, or some other activity that doesn't include technology. The new card room will additionally have shelves of board games and puzzles available for diverse interests. While there may be some set times for classes such as bridge, Uker, and Maizong, between classes, the room will be available to anyone to hang out and play their own game. The picture on the left is what the room looks like now. The picture on the right indicates what the room could resemble with a one-time makeover. The room that's used by Schoolcraft College for their nursing program that was used features numerous sinks is now being reconstructed into the city's new arts and craft room. As indicated, the room is currently being cleared to open the center of the room to allow for numerous students per class, and the abundance of sinks will work perfect for cleaning up after painting classes. I'm a firm believer that a great confidence builder for the youth is to put them on a stage. What was once a small gymnasium by the former middle school was transformed into a theater by Schoolcraft College. To build a theater program for the youth and adults alike, as well as create a feeder system for the high school drama program, we're working with new high school theater director Alan Bennett. Alan's tremendously experienced in theater, teaching, and production, so we're hoping for great success in our theater program for the youth and local scene, local adults. In recognizing that the program is for everyone, from beginner to experienced, we're calling it the Garden City Civic Theater, civic being the root word of the word "city." The new Radcliffe Center also affords the opportunity to expand our free services for our military veterans. While the city was able to offer services through the American Legion in the past, the program's now expanding to include Wayne County Veteran Services. The unique difference between the two programs is that the American Legion deals with veteran health issues and how to navigate the VA, why Wayne County Veteran Services focuses on assisting veterans with financial issues such as paying their utility bills. As indicated on the screen, there is plenty of room available in the new office space to accommodate even more veteran service programs in the future. Currently under construction is the future gift shop and cafe. As you can see on the screen, half the store is being created to be a cafe whereby coffee, drinks, and snacks will be available for purchase. The other side of the gift shop is receiving slat boards on the walls to hang shelving and Garden City clothing for purchase, as well as arts and crafts for sale. As you can see, the expectation is to make the gift store a destination for anyone looking to purchase Garden City apparel for themselves, or a gift for family members who might have moved out of the area. With the potential of hundreds of people within a Radcliffe Center throughout the day, the gift shop is expected to be a very well-visited location. All profit received at the gift shop and cafe will be used to offset senior program expenses, such as the cost of senior luncheon, senior bus trips, and/or other senior activities. In making the Radcliffe even more inviting as a place for our residents to relax and enjoy, we're currently considering furniture to be located throughout the center. The picture on the left shows one of the larger areas that will entail a fun sitting area like the picture on the right. There are numerous areas in which two chairs will be joined together with a small table to allow people to either sit alone or have a private conversation with a friend. On the, one of the hidden gems of Radcliffe is what we've been calling the front porch. The covered patio formerly used as an entrance to the old middle school is going to be repurposed into a wonderful outdoor patio. Six months a year during the fall and spring, the weather would be ideal to sit with new friends and old friends in either between activities or just to relax with a coffee and hang out. We're considering installing a couple of sets of patio furniture, as well as individual seating areas wrapped around the patio. To additionally add to the safety and ambiance of the front porch, decorative fencing approved by the city council at the last meeting will be installed around the whole concrete slab. All the sitting areas throughout Radcliffe will make the facility much more inviting for everybody. Beyond the establishment of dance program within the Radcliffe Center, the second most active program is that of the Family Resources Center. Perfectly situated with two adjoining side playrooms, the new FRC offices will need to be reconstructed to house the recreation division. Items 11B2 tonight includes the reconstruction of the office space to fit the needs of the FRC. The project will include the removal of the ceiling, lighting, a couple of walls, and the carpet. After a few walls are installed to create four offices, a new ceiling and LED lighting will be installed, as well as new carpeting. The funding for the reconstruction of the FRC office comes directly from the revenue brought in by the hard work of the FRC staff of Sean, Kelly, Zach, and Yasmin. Unlike the past, when the administrative offices of the Parks and Recreation Department were located on the second floor of the ice rink in City Park, the new department's office space is now easily accessible in the new Radcliffe Center in a nice office space. One of the great benefits of moving into the new center is the additional space that allows the city to work with our community partners. The GCBA, GCYA, Kiwanis Rotary Club, Garden Club, et cetera, will all be contacted to offer them several shared office spaces, as well as shared conference room for their executive meetings. One of the biggest troubles that community groups face is the need to change their mailing addresses and phone numbers when their leadership changes, which is oftentimes annually. Using the Radcliffe Center as a home base for their corporate documents, as well as the opportunity to have an office and a conference room at their fingertips, is truly a great benefit to any of our community groups. Item 11B3 on tonight's council agenda is the replacement of the hallway lighting and ceiling tiles throughout the entire facility. The reconstruction project would not only update the appearance of the facility, but will also reduce the city's long-term expenses. Replacing the antiquated lighting with LED lighting should see a reduction of 50% in the utility bills, leading to a three-year payback for the replacement. After three years, the city's cost for the hallway lighting, hallway lighting should be about half the cost it is today for a long-term savings. During the last council meeting, the council approved the installation of fencing at the Radcliffe Center. On the screen, you'll see the three locations where the fencing will be installed. The A is the Food Pantry Garden, B is the Head Start Playground, and C is the Front Porch. The decorative fencing will offer a more attractive look to the facility, as well as offer continuity around the building. There are two rental groups currently in the Radcliffe Center that wanted to stay in our facility during the transition from Schoolcraft to the city. There are Head Start Program and T-Lab Program. Head Start is a federally funded program for preschoolers, and we're utilizing only four rooms and some office space before the city purchased the building. Head Start has requested two additional rooms for the upcoming year, of which we can oblige. Tonight, item 11B10 is the Head Start Agreement, whereby Head Start has agreed to pay a rental contract to the city of $104,000 per year for the rental space. While the former Head Start contract was for approximately $74,000 per year, I increased the rental rate when they requested the two additional rooms. Tonight's new lease agreement includes the increase of $30,000 a year, as well as an automatic 2% increase every year from now on. On the next council agenda, the T-Lab contract will appear. While the current T-Lab contract is for approximately $42,000 a year, I'm negotiating with a contract with Dr. Nixon for more than that. T-Lab is an international tutoring testing program for people of all ages. National certification tests can be taken on location, while the program is also set up for tutoring of all levels of children in person and throughout the internet. As you can see on the screen, T-Lab's facility is well-appointed, offering a very professional image to the Radcliffe Center. Together, the city will bring in over $150,000 a year in rental fees to cover the general expenses of the facility. We're confident that the $150,000 a year will not only cover the fixed costs of the Radcliffe Center, but will also defray the cost of future maintenance. From that point on, it would be the responsibility of the staff to do their best to find the sweet spot between cost recovery and the quality of life programming. As indicated on the screen, the Parks and Recreation Department headed by interim director Megan is only beginning to add programming to the offerings at the Radcliffe Center. Over time, this list will continue to multiply as more rooms become available for future programming. On the next few slides, you'll be able to see a breakdown per room or activity and its costs. Some of the expenses have already been paid, while others have yet to be purchased or bought brought before the city council. What is being shown now is the expected money to be spent. What is being shown now is the expected money to be spent, with none of the money coming directly from city taxes. This first slide shows the cost of the building, as well as the dance rooms and exclusive waiting room for the guests of the dance program. As indicated on this slide, the expenses for the fitness room, the game room, and the computer lab are being covered through a Wayne County grant the city was awarded last month. Tonight, the fitness equipment and the computer equipment are both being requested for purchase under this grant. This third slide lists future purchases that have not yet been made. Other than the slat board that was hung in the gift store to display city apparel, none of the purchases on this slide have been made. Similar to the last slide, no money has been spent on any of these projects on the slide either. As requested, this information is to show what the overall budget would be. Listed on the bottom, the request to fund this FRC office construction is on tonight's agenda for consideration by the council. Two items on this slide are also on tonight's agenda for consideration by the city council. They include the hallway ceiling lights and, which would reduce the facility's long-term expenses, and Wi-Fi, which would allow free Wi-Fi throughout the rooms and the hallways. When considering the funding for the facility, one-time expenses, there are four areas in which we have considered. First of all, through a Wayne County grant of $200,000, we have the opportunity to create the computer lab, the game room, and the fitness center. Several of those contracts are being requested for approval this evening. Secondly, through the federal funding of the American Rescue Plan Act, the city received $2.7 million. The city currently has requested, has a request for $4 million from Wayne County, but to receive the funding, which is still under review by Wayne County, the city would put up $1 million as a match for the $4 million. The $1 million in funding did not come from city taxes. A third area of funding is from the Family Resource Center, in which $37,600 request for tonight for the reconstruction of our office space is being derived from the revenue garnered by the FRC through their grant-funded programs. And another form of funding from the Radcliffe Center is the direct revenue generated from the two main rental groups. At around $150,000 per year in rent, we have the ability to cover some one-time projects now, and then later cover the costs of ongoing programming and maintenance. It should be noted again that none of the funding discussed is coming from tax money of the city. There is no tax increase for these purchases, and the one-time purchases are being made without affecting the tax revenue the city receives from the taxpayers of Garden City. The slide on the screen now is showing all the expenses from the earlier slides, including many projects that are in the future. One-fourth of the ARPA funding includes the $210,000 for the building purchase and the equipment which was left in the facility. The numbers you are seeing is not what was spent, but what would be spent if all of the projects move forward with none of the money coming from city taxes. As indicated in this final slide, thank goodness, huh? The money that was spent so far is around $375,000. Of the $375,000, according to purchasing policies, almost $300,000 was directly approved by the city council. Other items include staff overtime to work on the dance room walls, ceilings, the purchase of needed wood, the mirrors for the dance room, and some carpet installation, et cetera. Half of the miscellaneous expenses was to pay city employees overtime for the work they performed in reconstruction, reconstructing the facility, which was a lot less expensive than contracting out the work. So, in the end, the Maplewood Center will now be a profit center for the city, and in addition, the Radcliffe Center is being reconstructed without city taxes and has two renters who cover the cost of Radcliffe Center's fixed expenses, offering our residents of all ages a safe place, as well as full of educational opportunities. So, as always, great things are happening in Garden City.
Thank you, Mr. Doherty. Wonderful attention. The Radcliffe Center will be uncompleted. Or even now, it's, it's starting.
Yes, we have a number of programs, classes over there now, but we've, as we say, in the next month to two months, there'll be a whole lot more happening. And depending on the request tonight for purchases, we'd have to get the computers in if it goes through tonight, and that'll take, take a minute to get in, and once we get started, we're gonna hit a lot of, lot of computer program classes for all ages.
Fantastic, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor Protem, I got a question. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Doc, I just had one quick question. The $30,000 that we had to pay in overtime to our city employees, that did get transferred from the funding, so it wasn't coming out of our payroll, is that correct?
Uh, right now, it's out of payroll. In the end, we'll have changes later on.
So, it will, I just want to make sure that, that the residents know that it is going to be covered from those funds, and it's not gonna be coming from the overtime from our general funding budget.
It could, in the end, it comes from the, the reserves of the, the city in the end. It could come from generally the same place, but for the record, as people ask the question of what's Radcliffe costing, we wanted to make sure that we put that in directly as far as a hard cost. There's employees that work during the day over there, not so much as, as overtime when they come in as a group, but we have a couple of people over there that there is additional, just for, you know, to be, to be open, there is additional cost for employees during the day, but they're also cutting grass, they're taking down trees, they're putting in concrete slabs, they're still working regular jobs, so. But yes, just the hard cost to see what the costs are, we don't wanna say it's costing nothing for manpower or female power. Uh, it is, and.
People power.
People power.
There we go.
That's the word.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Mr. Doherty, so, the hours that, the overtime hours that DPW put in over there.
Yes.
Cause they have their budget, which right now is being taken away to the tune of about $29,000. Does that go back? Cause that affects their budget at the end of the year.
Well, again, we're kind of what you had just asked, question, it goes back into, it all comes from one bucket in the end. Right now, this is for defining purposes of where the money's actually coming from. We will not limit any overtime for the, the public works when it comes to working, snow removal or anything else. We won't be limited or constrained to say that money's gone, now we have no overtime ability.
But that's not coming from Wayne County, which this money should.
No.
That 20, $29,000, because it's being used on the Radcliffe to renovate it.
That would be out of the ARPA money. Out of the ARPA money, not out of the Wayne County money.
Well, right.
Yeah, which is back to the general fund of the city. So, we're, we're defining it where it's coming from. In the end, it can, it's gonna come from the, the general fund as all budget, you know, purchases are anyway. So, right now, we're, this is more of keeping a, a list of it, but yes, what, it's, it's not affecting, if it goes back to the question, are we affecting public works with this? No, not at all.
Their budget, is what.
Yeah, we're not, yes, they can still use what they're gonna use. This is gonna come from ARPA at the end. So, one of the things, just as a side note, when I first arrived here, the, this department heads often look to see where the money was in their budget, and that's where they charge things to. As you know, we talked about this when we first got it, at the end of the year, it looked like a high-budget line, but actually, they bought a bunch of other things from that line. So, I explained to the department heads from the start, buy things out of the line exactly where you're buying it from. In the end, we could figure out how it's all being paid directly, but don't put by a, you know, something out of the gas line. Don't fix a road out of gas line, cause there's more money in the fuel line, the gas, buy it out of the, the road bond or so. So, yeah, it makes more sense in the end of where it's coming from. So, this right now, it's coming from overtime from public works, but it does not affect the overtime budget at all. We just won't be able to show you where it's going, where it's come from.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, moving on to community events, we have Elaine Salter from the Garden City Business Alliance to talk about the trunk-or-treat.
Hello, everyone, I'm Elaine Salter. I am here just to give you an update on our plan to the trunk-or-treat this year. Our date is October 27, which is again a Thursday. We always do a Thursday before Halloween. We will be holding it again at Radcliffe Center in the south parking lot. You know what I call this, my south parking lot? And, um, yeah, we have several locations that Mandy has donated. Liberty Tax at Clive Millville, Carrot State Sports, Two-Archer Salon, and the old Parnet Building. Garden City DDA has agreed to hold candy bars at faith and straight farmhouse. And, um, we hope that you all come out and enjoy. We are gonna be selling tickets again this year. We are limiting it to 1,000 tickets. We had a budget last year of 2,000, and we ended up selling just under 1,000, and it ended up being the perfect number, so we're happy with that number, we're gonna stick to 1,000.
Is it a question? I don't know. I'll ask her if you want. I've heard it come in my mic. Uh-oh.
Then, you're going to repeat myself?
No, uh, how much are the tickets?
$1.
$1.
And the only reason we're selling tickets is just so we have, know how many people are coming.
Right.
And of course, we always promote the home pantry, and we encourage everyone to bring non-perishable food items to the event.
Okay, great, thank you.
And I hope you all enjoy music in the park this year.
That's great, thank you. Okay, we have no petitions or communications. Moving on to number 10, public hearing. We do have a public hearing tonight regarding the DDA Development Plan and Tax Financing Plan. I am opening up the public hearing to anyone who wants to speak on the issue. But first, I would like to invite Mario Ortega, the city's planning official, to speak and give us an overview of the issue.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, council members. Tonight, we're here for a public hearing to consider an amendment to the DDA's tax increment financing plan. The DDA has already adopted these changes, and they're, they're minor, it's a minor amendment mainly to make sure, number one, that the, the DDA plan reflects the current state statutes and all updates necessary, as the plan was originally last adopted in 2007, so we just wanted to modernize it, sometimes that's necessary. The second and most important is to include language for the potential of the development of a downtown park. The DDA plan includes a list of various projects that the funding from tax increment financing could be spent on, and this project was not originally included. So, the DDA, with this effort to consider the development of a park, in order to move forward with additional tasks such as eventually looking at feasibility studies, and then actual construction, and, or constant planning, and those types of activities, requires just the inclusion of the Downtown Development Authority having these, this listed as a line item. So, that's mainly what the amendment is for.
Okay, Mrs. Dollop, did you want to speak?
It's really cut and dry, so, I'm very public, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ortega. The public hearing is now open for public comment. At this time, we invite members of the public to make a comment about any issues relating to the public hearing. You'll have a maximum of three minutes to speak. Anyone wanting to speak on this issue? I'll ask again, anyone want to speak on the issue of the DDA Development Plan? Okay, seeing no comments, I am closing the public hearing. Okay, moving on to item 11A, the consent, consent agenda.
Mayor Protem?
Uh, Councilmember Lynch?
I move for the approval of the consent agenda, item 11A, 1 through 5E.
Support.
Okay, support from Councilmember DeMichael. Any comments from the table? Any comments from the general public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Okay, now on to the action items. Okay, the first item is 11B1, the subject of our public hearing tonight, the DDA Development Plan and Tax Financing Plan. I need them.
Mayor Protem?
Councilmember Lynch?
I move to approve the Garden City Downtown Development Authority Third-Amended and Restated Development Plan and Tax Increment Financing Plan as proposed.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Earl. Any comments from the table? From the general public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Item 11B2 is the contract for the Family Resource Center offers reconstruction. Mr. Doherty?
Thank you, Mayor Protem, this is one of the items we talked about earlier. The Family Resources Center is moving over from Maplewood over to the Radcliffe Center. We had a picture up on the screen earlier. They are cash-positive now as an organization from the changes we had made in the last couple of years. So, the revenue they're bringing in would be put towards funding this change over at Maplewood Center to create the office space for them.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Doherty. A motion is in order.
Mayor Protem?
Councilmember Earl?
I move to approve a contract with All Phases Ceiling and Carpentry of Garden City, Michigan, in the amount of $37,600, with funding derived from FRC revenue, for the demolition of the old space and the installation of new walls, doors, ceilings, and carpet, and the reconstruction of, of the future Family Resources Center office spaced in the Radcliffe Center.
Support.
Uh, support from Councilmember Jacobs? Any comments from the table?
Just one, Mayor Protem, and it actually goes to all three of these bids, which I, we had a Garden City Business, All Phases, that bid on all three of these projects, which would have been a savings of about $19,000 if they'd have done all of them. They were underbid by a group from Taylor, and I wanted to, I would have liked to have combined all three of the bids to the, to All Phases Company, since they're Garden City Company. I've been told that we can't do that. I'm not real, real fond of that, because we sit up here every week or every meeting and talk about how we wanna get Garden City businesses and Garden City people, businesses, and when one of them's gonna save us $19,000 and we can't use them, it doesn't sit well. Whether they should have all been bid out together is another issue, but all three had one bidder from Garden City that would have saved the city $19,000 again, and we're not gonna do that, so. That's all I have.
Okay.
I have a comment also regarding that. There's three different things going on with the ceiling, and so two companies, or one company's gonna do two of them, and another company's gonna do one. You'd think that it would make more sense that just one company's gonna do all those things instead of having this company do these ceiling tiles and this company do these ceiling tiles. They're already in there, it has to, I mean, I'm not sure how different the bids were, but it just makes more sense to have one company do all three of those. Can we rebid that so that it's one job?
Rebid?
Well, I'm just saying, can we do it so that it's one job?
Yeah, the, our FRC is a full construction, office space, ceilings, carpets, walls, build tiered-down walls. The other one, the third one that wasn't talked about yet tonight, is just a ceiling tile in a room. So, I don't believe that's the same company necessarily, if you bid it out as one job, those are two different jobs. The other one is the biggest of all, is the hallway we haven't talked about yet, that's the next one.
Or ceiling.
Yeah, that's a whole lot of space, a full ceiling. The company that bid on the, the smaller job, the one room, did not bid on the hallway job. That could have been mixed, but they're totally different jobs also. The other one is two-by-two, full new ceiling grid, the other one is replacing the ceiling tiles with LED. They're different, but the same, but they're different. So, I, I don't think they, you bid all three out and get one company to do all you could, but they are different jobs, so I would not put them all together. The question that the councilman's asking for is, between these next three, we're only talking about number one right now, All Phases received that bid, number two is All Phases, number three that we haven't talked about yet is All Phases came in second place by $7,000 they lost. So, the question is, I guess, we really should wait till we get to the third bid, at this point, if we can, that's maybe just, let's finish these two first, please.
Okay. Any comments from the general public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Item 11B3 is a contract for the Radcliffe hallway ceiling replacement. Mr. Doherty?
Yes, Mayor Protem, this is, as we just talked about a moment ago, this is literally the takedown, as the picture on the slideshow earlier, was all of the ceiling tiles and all the lighting. We have the 1960s, 70s lights up there at best, going to all LED lighting, which will be a big savings long-term. The grid itself will stay up there, the grid would be painted. It's very easy to do, and it'd be a lot cheaper than replacing all the grid, so an all-new ceiling tile, all-new lighting would be done throughout the entire building, which of course would last us for decades at that point. So, this was a request that was put out, and All Phases, same company from Garden City, came in at the lowest bidder for this project.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Doherty.
Mayor Protem?
Councilmember DeMichael?
I move to approve a contract with All Phases Ceiling and Carpentry of Garden City, Michigan, in the amount of $105,000 for the removal of the current ceiling tiles and long lights in favor of the installation of new. long lights in favor of the installation of new LED lighting and ceiling tiles throughout the hallways of the Radcliffe Center.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Lynch. Any comments from the table? From the general public? All in favor?
No.
Oh. He has.
Kelly had a, from All Phases, he did have a
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Request to speak.
Hi, I'm Kelly Williams with All Phases Ceilings and Carpentry. So, with this, the replacement of the ceiling tile in the hall with the lights, being from Garden City, I also included replacing some of the, I've walked the jobs before I do them, and go out with the bid package together, looking at most, a lot of them were, we tear down the lights in the hall, we couldn't know it's going to have to be replaced. I included that in my bid package. So, a lot of the companies that are going to bid against me are going to include things like that, where it could be an additional cost to that. So, that's included in there. So, that's probably about $35,000. That's included in that $105,000. So, when you guys look at the next bid, there's also an additional cost in the next bid package you're going to look at also. So, in the next bid package, there is a, it's like a, the ceiling's got to be elevated at the windows to let the lighting of the hall, that's also got to be done at the exterior windows to let the lines work correct. That's going to be about, that's about $3,000. So, I'm, it's not really, there's like a $7,000 difference between my bid and the other gentleman's bid, but that wasn't included in there, but when I walked the site and I seen it, so the difference between my bid and his bid, I don't know what he'll charge you, but if I didn't include that and I awarded the bid, it was about a $3,000 difference.
Okay.
So, if awarded to him, he's probably going to issue with an extra, because he won't be able to buy anything.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
If council wants, we could just hold off on this one and just bring it back.
Well, we need to go down this one first.
Get more details. Finish number two for seats.
Yeah, we're at number three.
We're at, we're at number
Number two.
We're at number two for All Phases.
Yes.
Item number three.
B3.
Item number three.
Yeah, B3.
We're at the, we're at item number three.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes six-zero. Okay, now on to 11B4, the contract for the Radcliffe Game Room Ceiling Installation.
Mayor Protem?
Yes?
Could we hold on to this with the permission of the city manager?
Table?
To look into it further?
Table with no date, but next meeting expected.
Okay, so then, I move to table, item 11B4, until the last, next meeting?
Support.
Any comments from the table? From the general public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six-zero.
Bless you.
Bless you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, 11B5 is the purchase of senior fitness room equipment. Mr. Doherty?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. As you could see, we had 10 different bidders that came in with a whole bunch of different types of equipment to try to figure out, so, what was, what was the best equipment as well as the best price? And it looks like Direct Solutions at $55,667 for the fitness equipment. It's mostly Precor equipment, which isn't quite what we bid out, but it's a, it's a solid commercial brand. It's number one, number two with the one that we bid out. The prices arranged, they even go all the way up to $207,000, to give everyone an idea. Fifty grand and sixty grand, that was about the average price area, price point. So, recommendation is to move forward with this, with, this is funding derived from Wayne County grant that we already have. This is not one we're hoping for, and this would create a new senior fitness center within the Radcliffe Center.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Doherty. A motion is in order?
Mayor Protem?
Councilmember Jacobs?
I move to approve a contract with Direct Fitness Equipment of Mundalene, Illinois, in the amount of $55,667.15 for the purchase of fitness equipment for the senior fitness room in the Radcliffe Center, with funding derived from a Wayne County grant.
I'm so excited, I just wanted to jump on that. Support. Sorry about that.
Support from Councilmember DeMichael. Any comments from the table? Comments from the general public? Yes, ma'am? Could you step up to the podium, please, and give your name and?
My name is Sue Orzell, and I was just wondering, what are you doing with the old equipment that's at Maplewood Center?
Okay.
Auction. This Saturday, it's going to be auctioned off along with other equipment.
Why? What's wrong with it?
It was the timer.
Oh.
It's all being replaced with this. We actually have a grant that specifically stated to purchase this, replace it with this equipment. The equipment you have is much older, it's unstable. The equipment you're going to get here is going to be fantastic and strong, long-term. So, if we can get a couple of dollars out of the old equipment, we will, and we'll see how Saturday goes as far as auction.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am?
On the equipment that's at Thrift Store, I understand it's going on auction and that.
Your name, please, for the
Oh, Man Frye.
Thank you.
I was wondering, because we volunteer up there all the time, if the seniors couldn't get first, you know, pick of the stuff somehow. I mean, that's just my, because we need it more than anybody. I, I don't know.
Yeah. You can't.
Okay.
Now, when the city ever disposes of equipment, it has to be open to everybody for even opportunity, so, it'll be auctioned.
Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes six-zero. Item 11B6 is the purchase of the Computer Lab computer equipment. Mr. Doherty?
Yes, this, this one, as I mentioned earlier in the show, the infrastructure is all there. The, what Schoolcraft left with was all basically the modems. So, although the wiring is there, there is nothing that gives us full Wi-Fi throughout the building as well as the individual rooms themselves. So, if we want to make it the inviting center, we're talking about whether you're sitting in the classroom or you're sitting in a lounge area or even a front porch, we should have access to Wi-Fi throughout. That's kind of a standard in today's society, so the request is to move forward with putting those modems in place, and that's why you don't really see a lot of wiring and infrastructure. It's really putting those service points in place.
This is for the computer lab purchase.
Correct.
Yes.
Hold on, which one am I on?
Wi-Fi is the next one.
Oh, my goodness. All right, let me say everything backwards.
Thank you, Mr. Doherty.
So, we're done with the next one. So, this is the computer lab itself.
Yeah, this is the computer lab.
I'm sorry, I jumped, I see computers in both my forms. So, similar thing, this is to purchase 37 computers for the community center. Thirty-one of them would actually be in the classroom, and we're looking at a couple of places in the hallways to have a few extra miscellaneous computers, kind of like business centers, so that we're not using the computer lab for everyday stop-in and use them as computers. Those would be in the hallway, 31 being 30 for the class and then one for the teacher, and that'll have the most updated computer software, the old computers that are there that we're looking to auction off for 15-some years old and don't have the software in it for anything else. So, at this point, it's, and this is part of the request of the Wayne County grant, was similar to weight equipment. It was to purchase new computers for the computer lab. So, this is one, again, with money derived from Wayne County for 37 computers with the software programs.
Thank you, Mr. Doherty.
Mayor Protem?
Councilmember Lynch?
I move to approve the purchase of 37 computers and software programs, as well as the installation of the software and placement in the new computer lab in the Radcliffe Center in the amount of $56,177.47, with funding derived from a Wayne County grant.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Jacobs. Any comments from the table? Comments from the general public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six-zero. Now, installation of the Wi-Fi at the Radcliffe Center.
Everyone loves Wi-Fi. More on that one.
Mayor Protem?
Councilmember DeMichael?
I move to approve an agreement with BPI, the city's IT consultant, for the purchase of the hardware and the installation of Wi-Fi throughout the Radcliffe Center in the amount of $28,149.84.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Lynch. Any comments from the table? From the general public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six-zero. Okay, item 11B8 is the annual computer support agreement with BPI. If he is here, I'd like to ask the BPI representative, Zach Palmer, to come up and talk about the agreement. Thank you.
Good evening, how you doing?
Good evening.
So, the computer support renewal contract, it's pretty straightforward, it's very similar to what it was last year. We have a 2.5% increase on each, each system that we have in there. We're actually looking at less personal computers this year, a little bit more laptops, but it's just an increase. We have the computer lab coming in, and that's taking everything into play there. So, that's coverage of everything you see on that list, and our IT manager is in charge of that, and you probably know him well from being around, so.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Palmer.
No problem.
A motion is in order?
Mayor Protem?
Councilmember Earl?
I move to approve an agreement with BPI, the city's IT consultant, regarding the annual computer support the city receives from BPI in the amount of $110,705.40 per year. Support.
Support from Councilmember DeMichael. Any comments from the table? From the general public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes six-zero. Item 11B9, the sale of police vehicles by the Police Department. Chief Gibbons, would you like to speak?
Sure, thank you, Mayor Protem. Council, yeah, this is just a request to be able to auction two previously used police patrol vehicles. One was utilized as a patrol vehicle, then taken out and used as an admin car. The other was taken out of patrol and used as an ordinance car. So, we've gotten as much as we could possibly get out of them, and now we're going to try and maximize their value in an internet auction.
Okay, thank you, Chief Gibbons. Motion is in order?
Mayor Protem?
Councilmember Jacobs?
I move to approve the sale of the vehicles listed on the attached sheet currently in the possession of the Garden City Police Department. The sale of each vehicle will be conducted by the chief of police or is designated for fair market value through an auction process.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Lynch. Any comments from the table?
Mayor Protem?
Yes?
Chief, I just have a question, knowing in reference to the vehicles that we have and the additional support that we have in the ordinance department, will be, will we be purchasing additional vehicles for those new?
Well, it's just part of our, our vehicle cycle, so, we'll
Police cars that are coming in.
We purchase new patrol vehicles, they get used patrol vehicles, once they're no longer safe pursuits or where we want, we move them over to ordinance, but they get driven a lot slower, and then they drive those until we cycle them out. So, we've shifted just retired patrol vehicles into the ordinance department, and we're selling some of the ordinance.
Perfect, thank you.
No problem.
Any comments from the general public? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes six-zero.
Thank you, council.
Thank you. Okay, 11B10, contract with Head Start for the Radcliffe lease. Mr. Doherty?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. This was, again, something we talked about during the presentation a little bit. This was about a $74,000 contract last year for Head Start, is now $30,000 more. They requested two additional rooms that we have the ability to give to them right near their other rooms that they currently have, so $15,000 per room for the, per year. We're at $104,000, and I did get an answer for Councilwoman Lynch's question, yes, we are not responsible for that type of cleanup.
Excellent.
Of young children. That is their responsibility. We do cleaning in the Radcliffe, but we're not responsible for cleanup of any spills or any special mistakes made by kindergarten kids.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Doherty. A motion is in order?
Mayor Protem?
Councilmember DeMichael?
I move to approve a lease agreement with the Wayne Metropolitan Community Action Agency, also known as Head Start, for a period of three years in the amount of $104,000 per year.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Lynch. Any comments from the table? From the general public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six-zero. Item 11B11, contract for the installation of ADA ramps and parking spaces in City Park.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, council. So, this is an already approved agreement from Wayne County, the Wayne County Park Fund, and it is to approve the contract for JB Contractors to install those ADA ramps finally for the main pavilion and the brown pavilion, and this will be completing one of Parks and Rec's five-year plan goals, which is really great, and just bringing much-needed accessibility to those pavilions for people that need it.
Thank you, Ms. Sharon.
Mayor Protem?
Councilmember Jacobs?
I move to approve a contract with JB Contractors Incorporated to install ADA ramps and parking spaces at City Parks, Brown, and Main Pavilions in the amount of $18,200, with funds derived from the Wayne County Recreation Grant.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Lynch. Any comments from the table? From the general public? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes six-zero. Item number 12, other business. Is there any other business?
I have some.
Okay.
I would like to bring up the thrift store located at Maplewood. A few meetings ago, we were under the impression that, that the thrift store really wasn't part of Garden City, but recently, we were told that it is part of the city. The thrift store really wants to move to Radcliffe, and I'm not sure why we're not moving them there. We, we really aren't doing much for the thrift store, they're part of our city. We don't do anything for them at all. We don't have a Facebook page for them, we don't advertise for them. They're stuck in a little room that's been the same for 40 years. So, we have this big new building, I know the employees want to go, and earlier in the meeting, we talked about how many people are over at Radcliffe? 100 people a day, that would be an advantage to them. They are a longtime department of the city, or not an apartment, I don't know what you'd call them, but for 39 years, they've been making money and donating it to our seniors, and I think we need to take better care of them. I think that's something that we talked about before, and it shouldn't just be, nope, they can't go. We need to do something about it.
Okay.
We need to take care of them like we do the rest of our city departments. I had that to talk about, and then also wanted to talk about, I brought up last meeting about the managerial audit that we're, according to our charter, we're supposed to be doing every five years. The city manager had replied that Plant Moran is available to do that audit, but it says that our council actually should decide the company that does it, and also that our charter says that we should, that we should determine the scope of the audit, so we can decide as a council where it has to be. It doesn't have to be one department, it doesn't have to be three departments or all of them. It's something that we need to do. If you look back when our city manager first started, and we found a lot of things that were wrong before he got here, the library, we weren't charging them rent for how long? Nobody knew about that. Things that happened recently with the Communications Department, things that happened with the thrift store, we didn't know they were part of ours. I think those things could have been avoided if we would have previously, the council would have said, hey, we're supposed to be doing this managerial audit every five years. That's, we haven't done it since, I think you said, 2003 or something, since before then?
Yeah, I think Jody Doggs put it, what did she say in her letter?
Yeah, so that's three times that we could have done it.
Twenty-some years ago.
We could have done it to the treasurer, or the clerk's department, we could have done it to the, you know, all the different departments, we could have done three of them by now. So, I think that's something our council really needs to look into and get going on it, because I think we need it. There could be other things that we don't know or you don't know, and we need to find them and get them right.
I agree with that.
I think it's just a, it's a positive thing, we can't get anything better.
No, I would like to, I do agree that the managerial audit's in our charter and we should do it, and definitely it's something that we should look at. I don't know if we can go back and look at each department per year that we're behind from 2003, so what would be, we're behind three audits?
We don't, we don't have to do an individual department.
So, I'm going to let Councilmember Lynch, because I know you've been through this process, and Donna Boss has actually been through this process. I would like to say, though, that, you know, as we do find information out in audits and things happen, it's so imperative that when we find information out for us to make sure that we're, when we receive that information, that it's going to the city manager, the mayor, other council members, so that way it can actually be explored and investigated if need be. Anytime anyone's holding information back, that puts us at risk as a city, so. Can you, can you please speak to how that's worked in the past, Councilmember Lynch?
The managerial audits that I've been involved in, there were two of them, and what happened is we had a workshop, we sat down and decided which department was the department that was getting the audit, we listed the reasons for it, and we listed what general category we wanted looked into. And then Plant Moran, or whoever, and it was Plant Moran back then, came in and spent a couple weeks, up to a month, depending on what it is that was listed on it, and then wrote a report and gave it back to council to look at.
Okay.
And I know that it was expensive back then, because I remember it surprising me the cost, so it just depends on how much we're asking them to do, obviously. That's the experience I've had.
Okay.
And that was twice, so we'd have to have a workshop to discuss specifically.
Was there anything, can you, it's so long ago, could you recall any findings or were there any, I'm assumed, go ahead.
I want to say the last one we did was on the DPW Department, and it was irregularities that we found in the department that we wanted explored, we wanted to find out what best practices were on those irregularities, and it was presented to us, then it was up to council to direct the city manager to, yes, let's go in this direction, or it didn't give us much that we thought it might, and we took it from there.
Beneficial? Okay.
In that case, it was a 50-50 proposition, probably half of them were beneficial.
Okay.
And the other half were just nitpicking, maybe? But half of them were very beneficial.
Actually, I think all of them are, because it shows nothing's wrong, it's still beneficial.
Well, that's true. That's true.
Okay, do we need to set up a workshop?
I think so.
I agree. I'm not ready for a date without my calendar in front of me.
Well...
Well, I think we just can direct them, or ask them to set up a workshop for us so we can get moving on it.
It doesn't have to be today, we can say we want to do it, and we'll figure out the day later.
Yeah, that's fine.
Would it need to be a presentation from Plant Moran first, or are we talking about a workshop for us as a closed session to go into?
Well, Plant Moran would be there at the workshop with us so that they can give us direction as to what types of things we need to be looking at, and then it's up to the council to decide.
So, are we more so looking for a presentation from Plant Moran in reference to this at the council meeting?
We haven't even decided, it's Plant Moran.
At a workshop, and they're using Plant Moran because they're the...
Right, but we can choose any company that we want.
Yes.
I understand we should have a workshop to decide on the department that we need it the most.
But in that same workshop, the company that is doing the managerial audit needs to be there so that they can direct us on what exactly a managerial audit is, what types of things to be looking for in the managerial audit, because another local community did an audit, and council at their meeting had a list that was like this, and it ended up costing them over $100,000 to do that audit. And when they realized that they were just looking at everything, then they had to narrow it down and go for what exactly it was that they wanted. So, we would need the audit person.
Well, it's a catch-22, because you probably need to put an RFP out, because this could cost up to $50,000, give or take, more if you want the whole city, it's going to cost a lot more. So, you'd have to have some kind of workshop to discuss what you're looking for, to put into the RFP, to get the company who comes back and then tightens it up for you.
Right, sure.
Correct. So, that's probably the way to go, is to have kind of an open workshop of a discussion first, and then compose the work.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Doherty, do you want to set up, set up a workshop?
Yes, we'll take your, I'll talk to Matt Miller, we'll send some dates out to the council.
Okay, that would be good.
Yep.
Okay. Is there any other business? Time for public comment. We now invite members of the public to the microphone to make a comment about any item that was not on the agenda. Please fill out the comment card and give it to the city clerk. You have a maximum of three minutes to speak. Only state the facts of the situation. No comments may include defaming or slanderous personal attacks on any member of the city council, staff, or other citizens. Please introduce yourself, your street name, and the city in which you reside before making your comment. This is your time to make only a comment, not to receive a response back from members of council or staff. Is there anyone that would like to speak under public, public comment?
There are.
I do have a couple here first. I'm going to start with these, and then we'll have people, other people come up. Okay, Nan Frye?
We're all from the Maplewood Senior Thrift Store, we're volunteers there. Volunteers, the thrift store provides resources and support of senior activities in Garden City, time change, but the committee dedicated to the volunteers has remained the same. We volunteer for free, we enjoy helping others. We donate at least half for all planned senior activities, which lowers the cost for all participants. Donated $4,005 for band show in Garden City Park, donated to the following charities at Christmas, Garden City Good Villows, Lighthouse, rave program, Christmas shopping spree events, thanks to one of the volunteers. Mother's Day plants giveaway, and Fathers and Sons mini golf outing. Donation to the thrift store, tax deductible to the full permit. The thrift store is nonprofit, independent community support. We also have no fire extinguishers or smoke detectors in our thrift store. Our concerns are, they used to put us in the playbook advertisement, well, they did spring and summer, but they haven't put us in the fall and winter. We have limited access to the Meals on Wheels luncheon program, because they're shutting all the doors off, and they denied us funds to support the Kentucky disaster victims, and denied the funds for thanking the library staff for their support. We don't have access to a bathroom, so luckily the library is allowing us to use their bathroom right now. Overall, lack of support from city management for what we do as volunteers. I think that kind of covers pretty much. They tried closing us, but the community came together and realized how important we are to, you know, the citizens of Garden City. And, do you guys want to say anything, please?
Is there a minute to wait?
There are 30 seconds left.
They can each talk for three minutes if they want.
I just think it's important that we get support, like you said, towards, you know, towards the thrift store, to do something, because the community really wants us, and we do a lot of good. And I don't understand why they denied us the funds to send to Kentucky, because there's seniors there too, you know, and it was only, I think, $100 we were going to donate, and, huh? $300. And then we wanted to buy subs for the library, because they are allowing us to use their bathroom.
That is the three-minute mark.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
But they wouldn't pay for the subs that we bought.
Thank you. Okay, and Ted Maloney?
Good evening, Mayor Proton.
Good evening.
I'm Theodore Maloney, I work right over here at Craftique, and we've been hearing a lot of rumors that they're closing the park next door, the vacant lot to us, and we rely on the Lucky Squirrel event, and every time we go online, we don't find anything. We're just curious what's going on with the vacant lot next door to us, and we love being here in Garden City. We thank all of you for your generous support of Craftique, and we would like to know, or have something put up, what's going on, so we know how to tell our customers what's going to happen with the park next door, because we've only had two Lucky Squirrels the whole year, and people rely on that. They look forward to coming downtown to Garden City for events, and they can't find nothing on the website. With that, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Sue Orzel?
My name is Sue Orzel, I live at 6544 Elizabeth Street in Garden City, and I'd like an answer to my problem tonight. When they put the new streets in on Elizabeth, and they put the inclines in, one of my, they messed up one of my street, the sidewalk, and it put a big X there. That X has been there for at least a year now. In fact, somebody came riding down, and when I went looking out, the gentleman says to me, oh, I'm from the city, I was just checking out if it was your house that needed that cement replaced. It's been a hot summer. You guys are already looking to do cement work at this new place, Radcliffe. When am I going to get my sidewalk done?
Okay, we will get an answer for you.
So, this is, this is the second time Sue's been here, and she's, and I've asked about it at another meeting just a few months ago, so it's something that we need to get done.
Please. Okay.
I think it's just fallen through the cracks.
Kelly Hassel? Hello.
I live next to a vacant lot that's been vacant for 30 years. No sidewalk, just changed hands twice in the last four years, so what, there's no sidewalk being put in, and it was sold last month.
Oh, okay.
Is your question that if vacant, if vacant lots are required to have sidewalks put in?
Well, they should be.
Should be if it's sold, yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
I don't know what date, what...
How the ordinance is stated, I'm not sure.
The address? Do you have the address?
Well, I had the property number, but it's right next to 29650 Box Street.
Okay.
And it, you know...
No sidewalk, okay. All right, we will get an answer to your question.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Lori Couture?
Mayor Proton, Counsel, I have no complaints. First of all, I'm here to thank you all, and Doc, thank you. I'm the dance instructor, and we are the recipients of the new dance room floors, and today was our first day back, and if, I feel like, I feel like a little princess. If you could have seen the kids' faces when they walked in, they were so excited, the parents could not believe that we finally got this dance room that we deserve. So, I'm hoping to give you guys another 39 years. But like I said, Doc, thank you so much. It was, it was blood, sweat, and tears. I want to thank Sheldon and Damian, who were our DPW guys that were on staff there, and actually the whole staff, Steve Maholic, they worked so hard. I'm not easy to get along with sometimes, but they were so great, and they did a great job, and I hope that you guys can all come take a look at it. Thanks again.
We will, thank you. Okay, Kelly Bailey?
Hi, everybody, good evening.
Good evening.
Council, community, I'm here also on a positive note, because I've been for eight years now collecting boots for the veterans, started out at Middle Belt and John Hawk, 2014, then when the Lucky Squirrels started, I was asked and invited to join and start collecting boots there. The community has always, always overwhelmingly supported me. I have donated hundreds of dollars to the Southeast Michigan Veterans Association. I've also donated to Downriver for Veterans, I've also donated to Veterans Haven over in Wayne. So, I am here to thank everybody and remind you once again that I will be out there, rain or shine, but I hear 86 degrees. So, I expect to see some people and some boots. Thank you all so much again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
Kim Doyle, DDA Director. First, I want to address the gentleman that came up earlier, and pretty much, our Lucky Squirrels, since we started doing those several, several years ago, they really, the amount of times we've done them during the summer months has varied. We did it once the first year, we did it a couple times the next year. This year, we decided, the last two summers have been incredibly hot, we are on the asphalt down there, we've had to call EMT a couple of times, and I have literally had to walk with a, around with a cooler full of ice cold rags to give some of the vendors, and water and Gatorade, so there was a decision made not to hold this during the summer months. I do apologize if people feel that it impacted them negatively, but we felt that the health of our, our citizens and our vendors was more important in this case. We do have a Lucky Squirrel Facebook page, and the, our website, the GCDDA website, did have all the Lucky Squirrel information on it, and I went on it the other day to update some stuff, and I think maybe I made a mistake and got rid of a few things that I shouldn't have, so that's being looked at this week, and I do apologize for that. The Lucky Squirrel is completely sold out, though, so everybody come on up Saturday, it's from 10 to 3, rain or shine, but it's not going to rain, it's going to be a beautiful day. And finally, don't forget about the Chili Cook-Off on October 8th. We are still looking for chili teams, we have a little ways to go on that yet. We're holding it in conjunction once again this year with the Police Department and the Fire Department holding their open houses, so there's going to be a lot going on, and a lot of good chili to taste, so make sure you come out, get your, your friends together, and have a team making chili. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Kim, did you want to address this question about the DDA?
Excuse me?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I...
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Would you get with the gentleman that came up here and spoke about not knowing what's going on? I think he needs to see the DDA or talk to the DDA in regards to Mr. Maloney?
Right, I was referring earlier, we do have, we do have Facebook pages for both of those. At any time, you can call the DDA, that number 734-261-2830, and the num, that phone number, the office number, 24/7, is forwarded to my personal cell number, so I am always available. The door's always open at the DDA, anytime anyone wants to call and come and talk to me, come in, I have no problem doing that. And again, I do apologize if there was some information that was sought and not available. We do have some Facebook pages, though, that did, that do cover all of our events, because I do agree, and that's one of the reasons why the DDAs do events. All DDAs do them. It's to bring people downtown, to benefit our businesses down here, so.
Do you have any business cards that you could possibly give?
I certainly do, thank you.
Okay, that way he can go to a DDA meeting and get answers to his questions. Okay, thank you.
The Possible Park?
The Possible Park? You want me to speak about the Possible Park?
Yes, please.
Just real quick, that's what the Development Plan Amendment was for tonight. The park, we're really not calling it a park yet, we're really still in the infancy stage... We're really still in the infancy stage of this thing because one of the most important things that we're looking at is to make sure that we have public approval for this and public interest in it. If we find that that is not the case, we're not moving forward with it. We're not going to force something on our business owners downtown. We do have some roundtable meetings this week. McKenna Associates has sent out some invitations to some business owners and also council and different people to come over to the DDA office. The meetings are on Tuesday and Thursday, and I apologize, I don't know the times. There's two of them, one's.
Eleven was both of them that I received.
Yeah, on Tuesday and Thursday.
There's two meetings each day, though. One's from 4 to 5 on Tuesday.
Oh, we didn't get that.
No, 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 because there were different people invited to each roundtable meeting. That's what I'm saying. So anybody interested, give me a call, and I will get those times for you, but they are on Tuesday and Thursday. And yeah, there was a survey that also went out. It's been on the web page. It was, we were at Music in the Park. It was circulated pretty widely in the city to get information from our residents for it, so, but any, anything at all. If you have a, an opinion on the park, you want it, you don't want it, what you want to see in it, please give me a call. Again, that number 734-261-2830. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any more public comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll go with the city manager's report. Mr. Dockerty?
Okay, thank you, Mayor Protem. Just one thing I want to point out to the council. This was given to you at the last minute just before the meeting tonight. CWW Conference of Western Wayne, I don't know if you're going to bring that up, but 18 communities are in the Conference of Western Wayne, Western Wayne County, obviously, are communities out here. There's been the issue of Highland Park not paying their water bills to the tune of $54 million. Garden City is one of the several counties or cities that have been paying the bill for them. At this point, it looks like CWW Board of Directors sent a resolution out to the state of Michigan requesting them to reimburse our communities up to $14 million until paid towards the debt. So CWW is one of our groups that kind of helped bring all of our communities together to fight for a common cause, so hopefully this gets resolved at some point. I believe we're done paying the bills for the future, but at this point, we're trying to get some reimbursement, so that's a good thing happening with CWW.
May I add to that, seeing that you brought it up? The lawsuit that has been in question of whether Highland Park owed money to GLWA or not, it was finally, well, so far, finally settled, and they lost. So they owe the money to GLWA, which is in our favor. Now, I don't know if they're taking it up. It was in the Court of Appeals, and the Court of Appeals upheld, so we'll see where it goes from there. But we're moving in the right direction.
Okay, good.
And that's it, that's it for tonight.
That's it? Okay, thank you. City Clerk Matt Miller?
I have nothing this evening.
Nothing? Okay, thank you. Councilmember Jacobs?
Thank you. I have a couple of things. I know there's been a question of can council members sit on the DDA board? I know there's been some appointments, and DDA has requested the attorney, state attorney general to give us an opinion on whether that's legal or allowed. So it doesn't affect anything right now. In the future, it could whenever, if they take it up and when they give us an opinion, if they do. But for right now, it's, it doesn't matter, but it's at least being addressed. And Mr. Dockerty, I know in our, our video on Radcliffe, on the, on the veterans' room, are we doing anything with the ceiling and the wall, painting the walls, giving them a new ceiling, or are we just?
Yes, yes, that I believe was on the list, small print, but it was just a fly-through. I believe it's the carpet as well as ceiling and lighting to change it out. Right now, it's, it's okay as a place just to go into, but we like to put it into, we haven't done that yet.
The veterans deserve more.
Yes, no, for sure.
As nice as we can make it, if we have to paint the walls and all that, I'd like to see what, as much as we can do for them as possible. And finally, condolences to the Colletis family. Al Colletis, brother of our former mayor, Bill, just passed away. So a little double whammy for the family, and Big Al was a great guy, and he'll be missed, so condolences. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Karafodis?
I just have a couple things regarding Radcliffe. I know another program that started today was Champion Cheer, Return to Radcliffe, and the parents, me included, are very happy that it's back in Garden City, and it seems like it's going to help more kids get back into the program because before we were driving to Livonia. So I spoke to a couple of parents over the weekend, and they were thrilled to hear that it was back. So that's good that it's at Radcliffe. The other thing that I have a comment about, I know regarding the roads, we're going to be doing major roads like Maplewood and Marquette, so lesser roads are going to be done in the neighborhoods. I wondered if there's something we could do, like a maintenance program. There's a lot of residents that have mentioned their road is really bad, and they know it's not going to be done for a couple of years, so maybe DPS could set up a schedule like, hey, Windsor's the worst, maybe we could go there once a month to fill in some potholes instead of having to waiting for all the residents to call. And along those same lines, other people have mentioned about ordinance issues. We have a big ordinance department, and, and people are, are seeing things getting done and ticketed, and not everybody understands how long it takes for those things to go through. But a maintenance thing, we are seeing hoarding houses or other houses that are constantly ticketed, and then they're forgotten about for six months. And, you know, if we're ticketing them for five years in a row, that should be a maintenance thing. The same residents are calling about the same problems over and over again. So I don't know if that's something that we could do as a, as just something to have, you know.
The police chief's done a presentation before about that and went through the process of how long.
I understand the process.
Because once it hits the court, we can do nothing, yeah.
No, I understand that, but I'm just saying that houses that we know are problems, and they go through the process, and then six months later, it's the same exact thing again. So maybe we have a list of like the 10 worst houses that have been bad for five years that we, that we err up on it. I know the chief's on everything. And the other thing I want to mention, we're spending all this money on Radcliffe, and we put all the money into Helen Park. I thought a while ago we had mentioned about putting a walking path or getting a grant for Florence Park, and I haven't heard anything about that in a long time, so.
We have no grant at this point for that, so that'll cost a few dollars also. That could be maybe in the next phase of the county grant. This year is the handicap sidewalks, could be Florence Park for the next one.
Okay. And then I also want to know if there's an update. Are we hiring, or do we have something out for the Parks and Rec Department, the Communications Department?
No, we keep that in-house. That won't be discussed here at this moment anyway.
That we have, that we're trying to hire for Parks?
We're working on what our next steps are in those positions instead of hiring exactly what we've been hiring over the years. So we're looking at the big picture of how it affects everything, so, but that's not something for public discussion for what staff's doing.
The resident is asking if we're getting a new Parks Director.
Well, we're, there'd be, positions will be filled, but we're not, it's not going to be the standard positions of the past.
Okay.
Yep.
That's all I got.
Okay, Councilmember Lynch?
I also would like to give my condolences to the Colletis family. They've been hit, it's like a triple whammy over the past year for that family. Really sorry to hear that. And I want to send get well wishes to the Hegadon family for both Mr. and Mrs. They've run into some health problems just recently. And then listening to the trunk or treat, I looked it up, and there's four different things that I know of coming up in October, which is only two weeks away, basically. October 15th, the pumpkin spooktacular from 10 o'clock until noon, and it's over at the Radcliffe Center. It's $10 per child and $5 for a sibling. That looks like an exciting one, painting pumpkins, having cider, and lots of fun. So my hats off to the Parks and Rec Department on that one. On October 22nd, the Halloween Egg Hunt, which last year they had the thriller dance that let it off, which was, the dance group is just fantastic with that. And they're going to be looking for purple and orange eggs using only a glow stick. So that should be a fun one. Starts at 7:30. If they come in costume, there is definitely a costume contest. And then at 8 o'clock sharp, they're going to start looking for their eggs, and they're breaking them up into the age groups. So 0 to 2 will be together, and it goes all the way up to age 10. So that will be a fun one to put on your calendar. And then obviously, October 27th, the GCBA trunk or treat that was already spoken on this evening. And you need to watch the GCBA website as soon as the tickets come out, so if you're interested, you can get the tickets. And then I know also the Straight Farmhouse has their skeletons on parade, or whatever they decided to call it this year, but they, they've always decorated for Halloween, and it always makes it a lot of fun at Halloween time. So that's just a few things coming up in the next couple of weeks through the month of October, and that's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember DeMichael?
Yep, I'm just gonna, just so everybody is aware, and I know Councilmember Karafodis, you mentioned about the hoarding houses or the maintenance, and you know that there's a larger department there. So I did speak about this a couple meetings ago in reference to how this area actually works. Once it gets into the arms of the, the judge, so to say, right? There's a lengthy process in reference to that, and so once he gets that, it's up to, it's up to him as to how he's going to go ahead and actually enforce that resident to make them clean up the property, get in there. It's a whole legal thing. So unfortunately, these things do take time, and there is consistent properties that you could say in reference to ordinance and maintenance, there are those things in place. So if, again, I'm going to urge everybody, if you really don't understand how the process works, to talk to the ordinance department, to do ride-alongs. That way, just so you know, it's important for the residents to know how the process works. I know I'm not exactly a, what do we want to say, a brain surgeon? Again, I'm not a brain surgeon's wife or anything. However, I do understand how the process works, and it is important for the residents to understand how this works once it comes to the table in, in front of the judge, and it's up to him to enforce it and for us to go through the process. So I just wanted to address that. I did have a question in reference to our, the speed limit signs. I know we've had some issues with school starting up. I've been taking my best friend's daughter to school over here in Westland, and there's right on Ann Arbor Trail, there's that solar speed limit sign. And it's great, those signs are great. I know we've had an issue, we've looked at on Hubbard, I believe it was, between Maplewood and Warren. So I know we discussed possibly looking at solar speed limit signs, so I'd like to kind of see if we have anything in the budget for that coming up. Definitely around the school areas would be great, and I do notice when I'm taking the kids to school that people slow down. They see this, it's a big red flashing thing with the number, hey, you're doing over 25, it's 27, it goes to, to red. So I'd just like to take a look into that again and just kind of find out where we're at with that. And then in reference to everything else that's going on this weekend, the St. Thomas the Apostle, or the old St. Rayfield Church, has got their festival this weekend, and that'll be great fun, so everybody come on out and have a good time, and that's all I've got. Thank you.
Councilmember Earl?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. To piggyback off of the schools, I'm, I'm going to ask that everybody please pay attention at the bus stops. As someone who used to have to sit at the bus stops, numerous times I saw people driving past buses where kids were getting off. It's ridiculous. Get off your phones and pay attention to what you're doing. I guarantee that even the most lenient judge who doesn't uphold a lot of the laws will uphold that one if you get caught. I'd like to offer condolences to the family of Cindy Kelly. Now Cindy, not a Garden City resident, however, her husband Steve was an administrator for Garden City Schools for a long time. I think we have potential for a lot of great programs. I love seeing things for our youth to get involved and something to take them out of their bedrooms and off their computers and put them into another room with a computer. But, but, you know, I like seeing where we're going with it. I think, you know, it was, it was fortunate for the city to come across the Radcliffe Center. It's going to benefit us in a lot of ways. I don't want to forget Maplewood Center. I think there's a lot of great things that can be done there, so continue working in a positive way with that, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Okay, yeah, again, as Councilmember DeMichael said, the St. Thomas the Apostle Festival is this weekend. They've got a lot of good bands, a lot of things planned, so try and make it out. And I also want to give condolences to the family of Al Colletis. Now, the family's been through quite a bit this, this year, unfortunately, and I am very, very excited about Radcliffe. It's coming along beautifully, and it just, I'm very proud that we were able to obtain it and, and get it moving. And that's all I have, and with no further business at this time, this meeting is adjourned.